Good evening, I'd like to call the planning meeting to order for February 13th, 2008. At this time, I'd like to let the record show that all members are present except for Steve Barrow. He will be a little bit late, so I'd say we'll go ahead and start without him. He'll join us probably in about 45 minutes. I'd like to have a motion to accept the minutes. We have some revised minutes in front of you. Everybody give a chance to look over the revised minutes.
Do we?
And hang on one second Julio, let me do...
I don't have a set of revised minutes.
Okay. I thought we had...okay, okay. Let's do the revised...yeah, thank you. I thought I had some revised minutes here too. But do I have a motion to adopt a revised agenda?
Some of them.
Or make any additions or amendments to the revised agenda? Anybody have any amendments?
Second.
All right, it was moved by Julio, second by Michael Marshawn. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, please come forward and you'll have three minutes to talk. Also, I'd like to remind the audience that this is the planning meeting. We will also have a zoning meeting following this, so if you're here for the zoning meeting, it will be following the planning meeting. So anybody have any issues to talk about that are not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name.
Yes, my name is Ray Smeeter. I'm just here to introduce myself to the commission. A lot of you probably know who I am. I'm a civil engineer in land surveying private practice and I do work for the parish and also for the assessor. What I do is I maintain several data sets in the GIS, mainly the parcel ownership, the lots and the subdivisions, and I maintain and keep up several databases also for the parish. I've been in private practice since 1978 and I've been doing work for this parish since 1993. I know I've kind of been in the background, may not have met some of you, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself and so you know who I was. You know, the planning commission staff, of course, they know me, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to say hello and offer my assistance. If I could be of any help to any of you, please contact me and I'll see if I can help.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the minutes from last...
I have a question before you do.
Yes ma'am.
Charles, I had a correction, since I don't have a corrected set, I don't know if the correction was made.
I don't...yeah, I don't...when did you make the request?
I told the trustees on Monday.
I apologize, we failed to make the correction, I apologize.
Would you like to table it, or...
Do we really have to table it, or can...what was the correction?
There was an additional person who had spoke at the public speaking period that was not on the minutes.
So it's just the addition of that?
That person.
It was during the public comment period?
Can we approve?
O'Neal, can we go ahead and do that, Lee, as just far as telling, directing staff to make the correction and approve the correction or corrected?
Yes.
And just make distribution, Charles, if you don't mind, next meeting or...so we will have a copy of it, please.
I'll make a motion that we accept the planning commission minutes subject to correcting and adding the missing public speaker. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Julio Dumas, second by Michael Marshawn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda, I'd like to open the floor for public hearing. Well, excuse me, I'd like to open the discussion and then followed by the public hearing on family partition of Tyra subdivision lots 10A and 10B. Any questions by the commissioners?
James Faugherty, representing Earls and Associates, and Mr. and Ms. Lewis, Mr. Lewis Vonner, Vonner, sorry about that, and the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Do you have a trailer on lot 10A and what is on 10B, or what are you going to put on 10B?
It's an empty lot and I plan on putting a trailer, and there was two trailers prior to it, being owner property, and I just was wondering why I wasn't, I'm not able to have a trailer put on my property.
At this time, I'd like to open up the floor to public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to come forward and discuss this family partition, please come forward. No one wishing to speak, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Can I ask the applicant a question? I didn't understand your...you were saying, say what you said again.
That I was, I'm buying a trailer and I just needed the land to put it for collateral and there was already two trailers there, but the first time I got the knock of putting my trailer there.
You couldn't get your permits?
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay.
But previously, before this was done, two trailers were on the property, but nothing's on the property as of now.
Okay.
And you didn't get your permits for what reason?
Because he wants to use the land for collateral to buy the trailer.
Gotcha, okay. And he only wants to use half the land, not the whole piece of land.
Correct.
So it has to be divided.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Sherri Slimon, second by Don Grant. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, this time, I'd like to discuss the family partition of the David Beck property, lots 2A1, 3A, 4A1, 4A2.
My name is Scott Lobel with Lobel Engineering and Land Surveying. I represent Mr. Melvin Luke and his children in this family partition. Tonight, we're asking for you guys' approval. Any questions or comments, we'd like to address them.
I have a question. On this larger lot, which I believe, lot 2A1, you have a residence, a mobile home in the front, and you have a residence in the back. And who is, who are these, who lives in here?
Mr. Melvin Luke is the guy who lives on lot 1, which is in front of lot 2A1. His daughter lives on...
In the mobile home in the front?
In the mobile home in the front with the carport.
Okay.
And what he's wanting to do is, he had a stroke, he's an elderly gentleman, he wants to give these property to his children, which are in their 50s, I'm assuming. He wants to do that before he, anything happens to him. The other mobile home is on, or is Ms. Jewel's son, and he wanted that property to be given to her, being her son was living on it and it's, was his.
Okay, wait, I'm confused. Who lives in the front trailer?
If you want to explain that.
Hello, my name is Buford Luke. I'm Melvin and Beverly Luke's oldest son, and I'd like to make a general overview statement, if I may, and explain your question right after that, okay?
Okay.
As I said, my name is Buford Luke. I'm here to represent my parents, Melvin and Beverly Luke. I would like to give an overview of the purpose for my parents. On February 6th, which was Ash Wednesday of last week, my father reached 86 years' age. On May 26th of last year, suffered a mild stroke and uses a walker still. In the last few years, due to his and my mother's ages, he has repeatedly said that he wanted to give each of his adult children a piece of their property as an inheritance. While we adult children were reluctant to discuss this, as we each have our own property and are settled in our areas of residence, and due to our parents' ages and now their health, my father is more insistent and restless to get this matter settled. For the concern, care, and current circumstances of our elderly parents, we children have become more involved than ever in their lives. And for their health and peace of mind, we have agreed to accept and help carry out our father's plans to pass on their gift of love. As a matter of convenience and being the first born, my father has asked me to represent our family involved in this procedure. I have also been present in discussions in my parents' homes with Mr. Scott Lobel, Ron Sigler, and Christopher Ewing over issues pertinent to this family partition. They have graciously visited regarding this matter at my father's request, due to his health. They were able to survey and see the lay of the property. Although what seems like a simple approval process and decision to our family, we understand the purpose and necessity of the parish planning commission. We realize the policies and procedures are to plan, protect, and provide for the future growth and safety and prosperity of Ascension Parish. Therefore, to honor my parents and siblings, I stand before you to answer and clarify any unforeseen questions you may have to your satisfaction and to reach a mutual agreement for a favorable decision. My, says Jewel Beck and David Beck. David Beck was my sister's husband. He died last May at the age of 54, and Jewel's and David's son, Jacob Beck, and his wife, Amy, live in the mobile home in the back of the property. That's the second mobile home, and they've lived there for a couple of years now, and they have had all the permits and everything. My father has permitted them to live there. And that will become the property that my sister Jewel will have after the partition is done. Any other questions?
Well, that's fine, a family member can live back there, but if they move out, that one of those mobile homes has to be removed.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, it would probably be the son, if he ever moves in.
Okay.
Any other questions? There was a question about the driveway. It's a private driveway. Let's see if I can explain it to you. For several years, there has been a 24-foot limestone driveway that runs the length of the property that's involved. It is not a publicly maintained highway, street, road, lane, or even a drive, but a private driveway, which currently provides access to my parents and my sister's properties. On both sides of this driveway are three-foot wide drainage ditch slopes, running the complete length of the property and the driveway. Drainage away from and off the property is accomplished by the connection to the Black Bayou Road ditch at the front end and a parish drainage canal at the back end. There has never been a drainage problem since my parents bought the property. The driveway and the drainage slopes have always been and will be maintained by the property owners and not by the parish unless or until future changes require it. There was also a question that we may have to name the driveway before 911 purposes. We're well prepared to do that, but at first, we wanted it to remain unnamed, but if it is necessary, we will name it. Any further questions?
I have a question. Mr. Luke, you said that you all live somewhere else.
Yes, yes, I live in Livingston Parish.
Are you going to move on to this property?
No ma'am. I have a statement regarding that too, in anticipation of what you would ask about it. And this is a statement that I respectfully assure the committee that there are no plans or intentions for future development, construction, or modifications of any of the parcels that's to be transferred to each child. After much discussion, we children are going to accept these gifts of property out of respect for the well-being, peace of mind, and love of our parents. If any changes come about in the future, it is expected that each property owner will carry out and accomplish their individual responsibilities. Furthermore, any property requirements, legal, economic, personal, or social, must be upheld and maintained in good faith and honesty with the cooperation of adjacent property owners and governing authorities. Also have pictures of the driveway from front to back, if anyone wants to see that drainage is accomplished.
I wrote down there. Charles, is there an ordinance that says that four or more lots has to have a 50-foot servitude or a rite of passage? Yeah.
As I understand it, right now, though, it's not developed. It's just a division for, you know, passing the property on as an inheritance. And of course, if there is any kind of development, then naturally, we will have to extend. But as it stands right now, it's just the driveway.
Unfortunately, though, by virtue of executing the plat, you're essentially taking the first step in development, and that requires that we carve out the necessary space for the required driveway or servitude of passage, as the code refers to it. And unfortunately, the code requires that it be 50-foot in width. Now, it doesn't have to go all the way to the end of the property, you could dead-end just as you show it, but unfortunately, it must be 50 feet in width.
I was given a checklist of the plot checklist of requirements, and according to what Mr. Sigler and Mr. Christopher Ewing said, that we were only required to have a 30-foot wide, and that was 24 feet of roadway and 3 feet on each side for the drainage.
I think that's a variance in it, Charles. We can grant a 30-foot variance if we choose.
Well, you have to request for the, you know, for the waiver, for lack of a better term.
Is there a form to fill out, or just have to request it to the committee now?
I don't know legal, does that have to be advertised as well, or...
This is the plat that was submitted, and I mean, I think this is what it's advertised. He can use this. It's not like he's trying to hide something.
Right. Well, the, what I look at is, and I understand, okay, if that's what staff told you, otherwise, Mr. Sigler and Mr. Ewing, if that's what they told you, then, and apparently, there was some discussion. I still think that should have been stated in this cover letter, because it is a request of, as far as a variance on the ordinance, and staff should be aware of that. So I, I think that's something that we should have been made aware of upfront, not finding out tonight at the meeting.
Well, if they were given the subdivision checklist, it is on the checklist, isn't it?
Yes ma'am. I was told that this was a revised, new plat checklist, and we have checked right here, dedication of private access servitudes, required width of at least 30-foot wide for unusual and exceptional circumstances.
For unusual and exceptional circumstances?
Yes ma'am.
I think it's there.
All my father wants to do is pass on the property, and as I said, we have no need to develop it.
You have no need to develop it at this point in time?
Yes ma'am.
Tell us, guarantee us that in the future you want it.
I don't think anybody can guarantee you that. I mean, we've discussed it in senses. The only people that are involved are the children. We've discussed it, and we can guarantee, at this time, there's no, we have no need to develop it.
Well, with that being the case, you should have no problem in complying with the, you know, with the ordinance. You know, I don't have, I don't have an issue with the subdivision, and I admire your father for what he's doing and what have you.
Yes ma'am.
I encourage you to take care of them and continue to do so. You're doing a great job. I'm going to make a motion, recommend approval.
Wait.
I'm sorry. Oh, we haven't done the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Public hearing, yep. Hold.
Okay.
All right, anybody else have any questions at this time? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wanting to speak on this property, please come forward. You will have three minutes. No one wishing to speak. Our public hearing is closed. Any other questions, comments from commissioners, please?
Well, I was just going to say that I think it's got adequate space to comply with the ordinance, and it shouldn't have any impact, particularly since you have no plans of development. So I would make a motion to approve, you know, with its standard to code, and not the waiver.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a substitute motion to deny, because the frontage is not here, and as I understood it, staff told them it could be a requirement, and they were not willing to give it.
You mean the 50-foot?
Yeah, the 50-foot.
I'll offer a second on the substitute.
Okay, I'm keeping track now. Second on the, we have a motion by Paige Becknell to deny.
Sherri Slimon to deny.
I'm sorry, thank you. Sherri Slimon to deny, second by Michael Marshawn. First motion lacks, or lack of second, or lack of seconds, thank you. So we're voting on the substitute motion. Any oppose?
I oppose. I think we can.
Julio Dumas, Don Grant, oppose. All in favor?
Aye.
We have Michael Beverley in favor. Paige, in favor?
Yeah.
And Sherri in favor. Okay, motion carries, and the development is denied. Just doing a little cleaning up here for my notes here. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, family partition for the Earling La Bourgeois property, lots 8, 8A, 8B, 8C. Mr. Quimma.
Good evening. We had two comments from the consulting agency, one being a arrow was drawn incorrectly that has been corrected, as well as the printed name of the property owner and signature block, and as well as the date, and that has been corrected as well. We're just asking for approval.
Okay, no questions by the commissioners. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to come forward and speak on the property, please come forward, state your name. No one wishing to come forward. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any questions?
I had a question. One of the family members called me this week and asked me about this, and I, they just asked me what my thoughts were, and I mentioned that in the write-up, they mentioned a rite of first refusal to the other family members, and I asked, since it was in this write-up, I wondered about it being put on the plat, just so it is more binding.
Yeah, that's a question for me. It's binding in the legal document that the attorney will draw up in the transfers. There's no need to put it on the plat, it's just as binding as it is in any legal documents. You don't have to have it doubled up.
Well, but if it's on the plat, then everybody knows about it, but if it's, that was just what I was thinking. Where are you thinking about putting it?
Well, it's in the transfer document when it's transferred to the children. It's, that's usually customary, is when the first rite of refusal are put into the document.
Okay.
So in any sale, or future sale, any attorney would easily pick up on that.
Any other questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve with the condition that there be no further division of this property.
This is, this is family property. These people do have children and grandchildren. When you, when you make a motion like that, you're really denying any future child, grandchild, or any generation after that to be able to have a lot of their own. Under the ordinance, any, any property subdivided up to, I think it is, seven to eight lots, and any further subdivision requires a major sewer system. That hindrance will force you to keep all lots of that particular property under that number. These people do have, this has been family property for a very, very long time, and what you're essentially doing is denying their children and grandchildren the opportunity to live on their family property.
I'll second.
Be aware of that.
I have a motion by Paige Becknell, second by Sherri Slimon, for passage without further development of the property.
No further division.
Yeah, thank you. No further division of the property.
Just a point of clarification on the ordinance, on the condition, does that mean that they don't have the right to ever come back before the planning commission, ask for subdivision?
They can certainly come back and ask, but they need to understand that there's a strong chance of it being denied. You start dividing, you're going to create a subdivision.
What kind of subdivision? What do we talk about subdivision?
Well, I'm sorry, that's, it's, I mean...
Yeah, Julio, that's probably a question for O'Neal.
They can come back, but at some point, when it comes to too many lots, the fact we could require them put in regular roads and drainage and everything like they need to do, sewer system like they need to do.
But we could do that at any time now, without the condition.
Right. Actually, the way the family partition ordinance reads, if they come back and they are granted, it's already in there. You keep, because now, we can, we can keep track of the number of lots. Once you hit that, and that's where the servitudes of passage come into play, and then, once they hit the magic number, then they're going to be required to put in a community sewer treatment plant.
They also have to put in a parish standing size road, if you want to make them.
I guess my point is, is that it's just, you know, the tracking is already in place in the ordinance, and this is just a condition of approval that's a burden on staff that they may not have the wherewithal to really track. And it's a document, it's going to be out there in the public, it's going to cloud title, and it may not serve the best interest of anybody, including the parish and what have you.
But when you set a piece of property up like this and put a road down the side, they can go in and go boom, 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 10 different times, and this is hopefully going to prevent subdivisions from being created. And this is hopefully going to prevent subdivisions from being created without the necessarily infrastructure and...
But the code's already, as Michael just pointed out, the tracking is already in place to do that. Right, Michael?
But it doesn't always work, does it? Didn't we have a little episode over in Santa Mal that we found boom, boom, boom? It was, we had a whole bunch of lots?
We have had some issues. But at the same time, we have, there's other law that comes into effect that we have no control over. Now, you have three individuals here. Now, not wishing any ill for anyone, but somebody dies. The courts will go ahead and divide the property up according to the number of heirs. Now, we have no control over that. So, the property, in a sense, would become subdivided. We would see a, we may see a plat showing that at that time. We're not going to be able to stop a court order. And that's, that would be a court order. So, I think what we're doing right now is we are just putting another control in place. Maybe a bit strenuous to some, but at the same, well, at the same time, though, we have had more problems by not having the control in place. And I don't like it anymore than a lot of people out there. But until somebody can tell me a better way to do it, I'm going to stick with this.
It's in the code. I mean, I don't understand, the code's there, protection's there. I don't know why that y'all have to penalize...
Because we have people that have used the system, and this is the best way we can find to stop it.
This is a private servitude of passage. It will have to come back to y'all. It has to appear in front of this planning commission. Has to.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any opposition?
I would normally support it, but, you know, but this is such a minor thing that I feel compelled to say no, simply because I think it's extraneous and unnecessary, the condition.
Any other opposition? All right, motion carries. Before I go forward, I want to, I just kind of want to make the audience aware that Jamestown Court has been eliminated from the agenda. So, if anyone is here wanting to discuss Jamestown Court, has been pulled from the agenda. All right, item number six A, Legacy Oaks, planning unit development, final development plans.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Murray McCullough with Benchmark Group, 11328 Pinewood Avenue in Baton Rouge. We're the engineers for the project for the developers, Legacy Oaks Development LLC, excuse me, represented by managing partner, Mr. Larry Jordan, who's a builder of some 54 years of experience in Baton Rouge. This development, as you know, came before you in December as a planned unit development. Ultimately, was approved by the council. The ordinance was approved by the council last week. There were a couple of changes to our original plan that we presented to the community per the council's recommendation, and that is, we now have two entrances, or proposing two entrances on to Corner View Road with the council's approval of eliminating the stubout towards the east, pardon me, toward the west property line. This community is a mixed-use residential community. All lots in it are single-family detached lots. There are no attached units. There are 172 units on the 59.2 acres for a total density of about 2.9 units per acre. So, we're actually under the density allowable by the prior zoning, even though the PUD zoning has been approved. So, we're now under the proper zoning. We ask that, we've complied with comments made by the engineer review agent and by the staff, and we ask your approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners have any questions or comments?
I've got a question, Murray.
Yes, ma'am.
On your alley, which is off of West Main Street, behind the first set of houses, what's the width on that alley?
The west, you recall the width of, 20 feet.
It is 20 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we propose that to be a private, not public nature, obviously.
Right, but I could not find anything on here, and 20 feet is the minimum for the alley. So, I just wanted to confirm that. And also, you've got on here, let's see, private access and drainage servitude. Are those both within the same 20 feet? Tell me how that works.
Well, what it, yes, ma'am, what it is, is we're proposing subsurface drainage to run contiguous with the street. So, we're dedicating that as a multipurpose servitude for the drainage discharge, for the drainage within the street.
Okay.
So, yes, it is multipurpose.
So, is, who would be, who would maintain that?
It's probably, that would be probably maintained by the homeowner association.
The, the drainage?
The drainage, yes, ma'am. I believe that's what we're proposing. That is what we're proposing.
Sean, that's, you've looked at that? That's okay?
Yes. When we get to final construction plan detail, we will start looking at, with the issue, are we allowing public water from the area, various points of the subdivision drain through private drainage servitudes? And that'll be nothing more than adjusting notes on construction plans that'll be reflected on final plat. So, no, that's, it's, when you get to the detail of public pipes, private water, public water, you really can't hammer that out until you get the construction plans on.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Slimon, if I may, just add a little bit, we're asking for no waivers of any of the subdivision regulations or ordinances on this particular development. So, everything here will be in compliance with the subdivision regulations. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Wait, I have another question. This is kind of for Sean.
Okay.
Okay, Sean, look at the lots going around the, where it says green space retention pond.
Mm-hmm.
The lots have a drainage servitude on the rear of them.
Mm-hmm.
Is that necessary, since it's draining down into the retention pond?
My initial thought, no, it is not necessary, nor did we ask the consultant engineers to put that on, that was placed on there. And we're typically not in this, when with this reviewing process, to tell them to revoke servitudes or question the need of them. Sometimes they place servitudes on there to put, to control the access around the perimeter of the ponds. But if they're not putting a swell dish or drainage servitude for drainage purposes, I do not see that it's needed. But also, that is something else, if you, we typically look at construction plan time.
Right, and we would have no problem taking that off, if I'm not mistaken. There's something in ordinance that says a rear yard drainage servitude. I think that's probably why it's on there. But I agree with Sean, until it's dedicated in the construction plans and there's actually improvements in there, it's not really a servitude. We just showed, we've shown it on the map, but we'll work with them on that during construction time.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
O'Neil, do we have to do another public hearing? I mean, we've had this public hearing here, and we did it to...
You've got to have a public hearing now, tonight, yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
Yes, you do have a public hearing.
Another one, just because it's amended?
Because, no, because it's the final development plan.
Oh, yeah. But the council has passed it with these...
It's the best ordinance.
Yeah, with the, thanks. Okay, any other questions, comments? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on the development, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak.
I live across on Corner View, across from Legacy Oaks. We had requested some turning lanes. I was wondering if they had added the turning lanes, if that's got approval, or what is the situation on the turning lanes? It's my understanding, pretty much everything else, some of the things we asked for, we got, some of them we didn't, but that's understandable when you're working in a situation like this. But the turning lanes, to me, are probably one of the more important things, as well as everybody else on Corner View. I was trying to find out if that has been, if anybody knows.
Sean, can you address that just a little more?
Yes, the traffic engineer consultants for this, they conducted both a left and a right turn lane warrant analysis. This is typical analysis that you conduct when you're going to get a DOTD permit, and both of those analysis resulted that a turn, a right and left turn lane is not needed due to the existing traffic counts. Also, just remind you that the Corner View, this is a state road. They will have to go through and meet with DOTD, which they already have so far in discussions of the dual entrances. And it's also, even though it may be warranted in their current traffic study, the DOTD has the ultimate control over whether or not they will allow that, or if it's needed on their road. So, to sum it up, they have, the traffic consultants have looked at it, and they've concluded that a left and a right turn lane are not needed at any of these entrances on Corner View Road.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Sean, I did see the note about the turn lanes on 44. Okay, I couldn't quite understand if they were, if that was going to happen, or if that was a requirement of the subdivision. Do you know?
No, I've, maybe the consultant engineer can expand on that more, but per the traffic studies, pretty much what I've tried to summarize there is, they've looked at the intersection, and they've stated that, per their study, that DOTD has recently looked at that, and they have recommended that there need to be some improvements at the intersection. I mean, they've done that prior to this development showing up. And it's up to the DOTD, when they go through their permitting process, if this development should be required to contribute to the intersection. But no, it is not a requirement per DOTD for this development to make the improvements as stated in the traffic study.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was asking.
Yes, sir.
I'm Willie Quinmal. I don't know if you're aware, I spoke at the council meeting in regard to this subdivision about a second entrance on Corner View, and I've looked at the plat, it's satisfied that. Our main concern is, we didn't want a traffic light on Corner View to let those 300 cars out of that subdivision. Traffic lights are very confiding to traffic. I have no opinion on turning lanes, but when 300 cars are going to turn to subdivision, it'll be very interesting how to get off Corner View into that without turning lanes. It's not for traffic today. It's traffic when 300 cars come out of that subdivision. You're absolutely correct. You've got to look down the road a little bit, because the highway says you don't need it now. It's not a big concern, because we taxpayers will pay for it down the road, like we always do. But the second interest into Corner View was my concern when I spoke to the council, and they've satisfied that, so I'm happy with it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hang on. No one else wishing to speak? All right, public hearing is closed. Yes, sir. Yes, Ron.
Thank you very much. Just as a point of, point of fact here, as Mr. Shiro has stated, this traffic study, you know, folks are making accusations about 300 cars coming out. Well, the traffic study takes into account, this is fully developed. It doesn't take into account nothing being here, take into account there being 172 lots being in this development. So, it still shows that the level of service, I think, is acceptable per the State Highway Department for no turning lane. So, at this time, to try to answer your question, we have no plans for a turning lane, but we do have to go in and have additional conversations with this DOTD. We've had some preliminary conversations, but we have to have further, you know, detailed construction conversations for the development. But I hope that answers your question.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
On Corner View, you have ample right-of-way to add to the turn lane going into the development. You don't have dedicated land, you wouldn't use any development land. You could use existing right-of-way. I mean, based on the plat I see, it looks to me like you have ample right-of-way, state right-of-way, that is. That be correct?
I would say that would probably be correct.
I got to tell you, Murray, I go down that road regularly, and every time somebody wants to make a left turn or a right turn, you sit there.
And I'm not saying, I am not saying we're opposed to doing something like that. All I'm saying is, let the government agency that's in charge of that, let us go through that particular process. I mean, if you were to move tonight to require that, and the State Highway Department says, no, we're not going to allow you to do it, where are we?
Well, actually, what I would recommend is, is that we would move to approve it subject to approval by DOTD. I mean, it is DOTD's drive, right-of-way, so, you know, we couldn't force it upon DOTD. But if they were to approve it, I'd like to, I don't, the right turn out doesn't bother me. It's a right turn into the development that I think is the one you need on the, at the very minimum, on the main entrance, the second one. But I would rather see them on both. But the right turn in, I think, is what's important, because that's what people can be slowing down, you know, get them off the traffic lanes so the traffic can continue to flow. I think it'll actually be better for your development.
I'm not, I'm not here to argue, you know, against it. I'm just telling you that I don't want to be caught as a rope in a tug-of-war between responsible municipalities or governing authorities.
And I'm being sensitive to that. That's why I would propose to the commissioner that we would do it subject to DOTD approving them.
Sean, is that something that DOT would say, yes, you need, or no, you don't?
They have to go with DOTD. Sometimes, if you put in these improvements, you think that it will help, but it actually causes an adverse impact on all the other developments and traffic on that road. And there's two different issues. There's, you have to discuss, is it, are you talking about left turn lanes or right turn lanes? You've got to remember, if you're talking about left turn lanes, first of all, you've got, if you're talking about that first entrance, it's going to project further away from outside the limits of their property. So, even though the traffic study is not warranted, you may be putting them in a situation where they're forcing them to acquire extra right-of-way. The other issue, if you, their left turn lane could merge and be in conflict with the second intersection. So, I guess, to try to answer your question, they have, if they went to do these things, the DOTD will tell them, yes, we will allow you to do it, or no, we think that you will cause adverse situations on this, on the road. And left turn lanes and right turn lanes are completely, they have their own different issues.
Correct.
So, will DOTD tell them either way what they need? Whether they propose it or not?
Yes, they'll go to them. I believe their policy, they'll look and see how they think this development will impact the surrounding area, and determine what would be the best benefit for the overall area of where they should put their contribution, whether it be right turn lanes, left turn lanes, or should they make contributions to over at the 44 intersection that we discussed previously? That's, it's all in DOTD's wheelhouse on that.
Okay.
Yes, so Sean, essentially, if we were to require it subject to their approval, DOTD is really going to look at it, and they're going to say either yes or no anyway, right?
Yes, yeah, that is correct.
I think we're just expressing our desire that if it's, that it might be best if we were there.
Right. There's nothing, there's nothing that, I think, that ever prevents y'all from asking a request if you think that it's needed. I'm just, want to make everyone aware that, say that you really fell in love with the idea of how, of left turn lane or right turn lane, that it might not be there after they go through the permitting process.
Correct.
And then, all we ask is that, something be put there where, you know, DOTD says, no, we're not, we're not, you know, 30, 45 days, 60 days down the road coming back here saying, sorry, we couldn't get it with DOTD, and where we are. You know, I appreciate that position.
No, and that's exactly what I'm going to, what I would propose to the commissioners, that it would be entirely subject to their, to DOTD's final approval, with no need to come back here.
Any other questions?
Sure, Murray, I've got one for you.
Yes, sir.
Pertaining to the second entrance on Corner View. Looking at the comments and notes as far as the traffic impact analysis, has this second entrance been looked at as far as the traffic impact analysis, or is that going to be done? I mean, if you're going to have, let's face it, you've created a second entrance. You're going to have a certain number of people that's going to use that coming in and out, as well as your original main entrance on Corner View.
If you don't mind, I'll answer, but let me give you a little history of it, okay? At first, when this first came up at council... At first, when this first came up at council, at the council meeting, or even prior to the council meeting, when it came to our attention that there was going to be an objection or a request that this be done, we met with the DOTD prior to Christmas time. And they had, at that time, informed us that they would not allow but one entrance into the community whatsoever. So we kind of went that route and hence my concern about the right turn lanes, we became the rope in the tug of war. We didn't know what to do then, so. But then subsequent meetings with the DOTD came about and they allowed us, they said, "No, if they're going to require you to have two entrances, we certainly will entertain that idea." So our developers had no objection to that. But that's the long way of answering this. The original study did not have but one entrance coming onto Corner View. The, you know, traffic, we did not ask for a revised study for two entrances. I would, I mean, just point blank honestly, we did not ask for a revised study for two entrances.
Sean, will that become an issue at some point in time?
No. The, actually, the less entrances you have, you're concentrating all your traffic to that one entrance. So your left turn lane analysis, your right turn analysis are actually more conservative than what this layout is showing you. It'd been a different situation, if they had two entrances before, they can distribute the flow, say, 50/50. Say, "Hey, we don't need a left turn lane." And then if they presented you with a plat with just one lane, and that would have been a completely situation. But the traffic study is conservative in regards to a left turn lane analysis because it only factored in one rather than the current layout.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any comments? What is the wish of the commission?
I'm going to make a motion for approval, subject to constructing right turn lanes into the development, subject to, those right turn lanes being subject to the approval of DOTD. And should DOTD deny those left turn lanes, there's no need to come back to the planning commission to amend the plan.
Saying right and left, or just?
Just the right turn lane, one side.
Because you said right and then you said left.
Right, I'm sorry.
Right turn lane.
Into both, both ends?
Into both.
Are you asking for both of the entrances or just one of them?
Both of them.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And subject to whatever DOTD approves, and if they approve one or none, then you don't need to come back. Subject to what DOTD does.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Beverly Barre. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to introduce final approval for Greystone first filing. Mr. Bro.
I'm Greg Bro with Sigma Consulting Group, 10305 Airline Highway, Baton Rouge. We're requesting approval of the final plat of the first filing of Greystone. There are a few punch list items to be done. We anticipate that they'll all be addressed in the next few days. We would request that you approve the final plat contingent upon the punch list items being addressed and approved by DPW prior to actually getting the plat signed.
Commissioners have any questions or comment?
I have a question for you. Mr. Bro, the subcommittee is introducing an ordinance tonight about adding street name breaks on the plats. It's just, whenever you have a curve, sometimes it's not clear where the street actually changes names. And we were looking at your plat the other day, and several of us that were sitting in a meeting bought some of the curved, some of the houses, the lots within the curves. One person thought they should be on this street, one person thought they should be on this street. So would you mind to put those in your plat? I think it'd be real simple just to pop it in there, just wherever the street name changes. We can't require it, all we can do is ask you to do it.
Well, I'm not real sure where you're talking about because the entrance street doesn't change names, if that's the streets you're referring to.
Well, Stonewood and Waterstone.
Oh, oh, oh.
If you look up at there in that curve, yeah.
Okay.
We were just looking at it and one person said, "Oh, well, they should be Stonewood." And the other person said, "No, they should be the other road." So it was just, I can see where there's some confusion. So if you don't mind making a break for us?
That's no problem at all. I can get with Charles and see how he wants to note it, that's fine.
Appreciate it.
And that's, that's like lots 18 and 19. That's no problem.
Thank you.
And on your others? 76, 75, 74. At all of your turn.
The next filing.
Yes, ma'am, we'll take care of that.
Was the, when we were out there the other day, the entrance was not quite finished. They had the stones on the side of the road, was it ever finished?
The entrance, the asphalt at the entrance, you're aware that Josevario Road is fixed to be constructed. Well, the contractor who put the asphalt in Greystone is also the contractor doing the work on Josevario Road. Where they stopped the asphalt is where the new asphalt for Josevario Road is going to be placed. So the contractor didn't put that entrance in because shortly he's going to come have to tear it out again.
Okay.
So he left it where the new asphalt on the Josevario Road project would match where it stopped.
They dug the culvert out of the entry and changed it too.
And that's another issue. They had, we had put culverts under the entrance drive, and the location of them was different in the Josevario Road plans. So they dug that whole area out, the Josevario Road project,
Okay.
dug those culverts out and replaced them. So that's another reason that the entrance is not paved. But it turns out that where it's paved to is where they're going to pick up with the paving with the Josevario job.
Okay.
Have you requested your final inspection yet?
We had the final inspection. Mr. Shiro was there that before yesterday.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wanting to come forward and have any comments? Please come forward. No one wishing to come forward, public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions by the commissioners?
Either way, I was going to go ahead and make the same motion, contingent upon satisfactory completion of punch list items.
Thank you. Second.
Motion by Michael Marshon, seconded by Julio Dumas, for approval contingent on punch list items. Any opposition? Motion carries. I'd like to move to item 7B, East Creek Billas, first and second filings, final approval.
Craig Corry with Monroe Corry, 11325 Pennywood Avenue, Baton Rouge. We are requesting approval of the final plat. We've had final inspection and completed all punch list items. And we've responded to all the comments from the Engineering Review Agency and staff. I'm here to answer any questions in my hand.
Commissioners have any questions?
You have two comments on the letter here, 14 and 15, that the ERA shows us having not corrected. Sean, are they three?
And three.
Oh, there's a third one, I'm sorry.
Number three.
Number three. That's right. Got three of these comments that haven't been addressed.
I don't have that letter in front of me, can you?
Were they on the punch list items, Sean? Did you have this on the punch list too?
No, the final plat review process was different, came at a different time than the subdivision.
Okay, so Mike would have been out there too. You see them, Craig?
Yeah. Number three, the correct right of way width is shown on terming at 60 feet. Now, the setback from center line is 75 feet. And I believe that is, we have it shown at 65 right now. We'll get that corrected. And then, let's see. The permanent benchmarks have been set now, and we have that on the plat. And that's number 14. And that, number 15 has also been corrected.
Sorry. Can you check that, or?
Have they all been corrected?
Number three has not, but we will get that corrected before we get to signing them.
Any other questions? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please come forward. You have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to come forward, public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any other comments or questions? Sean, are you comfortable with them being able to complete the rest of three? And can you confirm that 14 and 15 were completed?
These are general note items. It sounds like possibly the revised plat did not, regarding some of these additional notes, might not have been on here. These are just general notes, items, maybe possibly if y'all had approved it, maybe contingent upon addressing some of these comments at the staff level, if maybe y'all can entertain that idea. These are just some minor, I'm confident these items have been done, benchmarks have been set, it's just placing the proper notes on the plat. And we can recheck that and provide correspondence back to Charles Becknow when we say all these items have been corrected prior to they sign the final plat.
And you've gone all your final inspections and passed them off?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to confirmation that all of the comments on the ERA letter have been addressed and correction of the setback dimension.
Second. Up the motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Steve Barrow. Any opposition? Motion carries. As mentioned before, Jamestown court has been removed. Moving to item number eight, public hearing to consider the adoption of the following item, amendment to the subdivision ordinance, section 31.104, multiple street access to subdivisions when needed.
The ordinance today reads, "Subdivision shall have more than one exit, preferably on different streets or in different directions. Street network shall facilitate the separation of local and through traffic." That's become a problem now with the roads that connect to the DOTD roads because sometimes, as we've found out, you can't do that. So the subdivision ordinance committee recommended that we change it, that the staff and the ERA consult and determine whether one or more exits is needed. If they determine one, or if they determine more than one exit is needed, then it's mandated and they have to do that unless, one, the developer can come before y'all and convince you that they don't need one. Or two, if it connects to a DOTD road and DOTD says they can only have one exit, then we, then they get one exit. So we're just trying to clarify a problem before, as it goes on. Any questions?
I'm at a loss, so what changes?
Okay.
This doesn't change anything.
Yes, well, it does to the effect that we're, our ordinance says "shall," which means "shall," but we have a problem. So we're providing the ways that you do not have to have one.
I thought the ordinance said "should."
No.
It does say, it says "should have more," right. But what we're doing is clarifying that if DOTD says they can have one, they don't have to keep coming back here to try and clarify that problem. Because DOTD is now telling them whether they can have more than one exit. We're not really changing, we're clarifying that issue now. You don't have to change it, I'm just drafted, that's what I was asking.
Well, we discussed this in the subcommittee, and I know Mike had some questions about it last month. We feel like this will give staff more authority. And we understand not every new subdivision can have two, more than one entrance. Sometimes the shape, the unique shape of the land will only allow for one. But sometimes there is room for more than one, and the developer doesn't want to give up a lot to have a second entrance or exit. We talked about it in our meeting, and we feel like it's a safety issue. You should be able to get out of there, or a fire truck or emergency vehicle should be allowed to get in in case one of the entrances exits are shut down for whatever reason. I live on a street with two entrances and exits, and it has been shut down on both sides before. Page has had problems, it's a safety issue. We just want to make sure, like I said, that the fire trucks, the emergency personnel can get in and out of subdivisions.
What we're doing is saying, is our people are saying, "You got to have it." You know, our in-house people are going to tell you, "Yes, we think it needs two, and these are the reasons why." We haven't done that in the past, we've stayed out of making recommendations. Where now, the staff and ERA is going to say, "Yeah, I want two." And if they don't want to put two, they're going to have to convince you why they don't need two.
But at the same time, the, excuse me, at the same time, the ordinances do tend to cover that. Topography and sound engineering practices have always covered that. And last month, my concerns were, this was brought up as policy, not as a revision to the ordinance. And this is something that's always been in practice. Staff has always made recommendations in the pre-act meetings to the developers pertaining to various issues, and entrances are one of those issues. So, and as long as staff communicates that that recommendation was made and the developer has declined, for whatever reason, I've always, myself, I've always looked at topography and the sound engineering principles because that's what's in the ordinances. Now, at the same time, the commission has opted, depending upon the circumstances, to use other reasoning not to require the entrance, or require the entrance. So it looks to me like, yeah, you're satisfying one aspect as far as concerning DOTD, but what happens if you have a subdivision that's on two parish roads? And the developer goes and meets with the residents? The residents say, "Well, we don't want an entrance coming out over here into our subdivision." And we submit a petition. We're going to submit a petition to the commission, and the commission says, "Well, you've submitted a petition, we're going to go with your petition, we're not going to require it."
Well, what happens if staff, well, what happens if staff simply looks at it and says, you know, "This is adjacent to an incompatible housing type or an incongruous parcel of land. You know, we don't think so, I mean, this is forcing staff to require it." I frankly would prefer that, you know, to not limit, you know, those judgments and those creativity. You know, I think the ordinance simply says you should have it, it doesn't say you shall have it. Staff is operating under a policy to require it and request it. It, you know, obviously, if DOTD understand how it says you can't have two, you can only have one, it's certainly power that usurps us, and we don't have an ordinance that says you got to have it. I, you know, and like you, I was expecting to see a policy amendment, that's what we discussed last month, not an ordinance amendment. I don't.
It is at the wish of the commission, you know, we will vote on it, and you can vote, you know, if you don't agree with it, you're certainly, that's your right to voice that, you know, that opinion. However, I know in the last year and a half since I've been on the commission, we have had situations where we have felt that subdivisions should connect. Residents have come before us and said, "I don't want that coming into my subdivision." And we have made them do it because of safety reasons. And we have made them do it because of safety reasons.
And that's, and that's, that's exactly to my point. We, you know, what, you know, other than being draconian, what purpose does it serve? Because we've done it successfully, staff is operating on that requirement, and staff has also allowed subdivisions to come before us with one entrance, because they felt it wasn't required or necessary. So...
From my standpoint, I don't think you can change, you can change the ordinance by making a policy. I think you gotta either amend the ordinance or not, but you can't make a policy that's different than the ordinance, and that's why I said you gotta do it by ordinance.
And I'm not, and I'm not suggesting that what we're doing is wrong, I'm just saying that staff administratively is saying, "Look, we think you need to have two entrances, the ordinance says you should have it," and they're making it based on what, on the face value of the ordinance, they're doing that. I'm not saying that we, as the planning commission, by policy have dictated staff to do something. I think the ordinance gives staff that latitude, and they should have that latitude, they're our professional staff. And I wouldn't want to be draconian to the point where I say, "Thou shall do it this way, all the time, regardless, and let me, you know, make the decision."
Let both parties bring their, their information. Let both parties make their case. The developer is going to make a case for either not having. Staff is gonna make the case for having. And we're gonna, no matter what, we're still gonna have to act in accordance with our ordinances. So, and I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against this, I say, in my opinion, it covers one aspect, which certainly deals with state roads and DOTD. I think we do need to address that, I don't think we need, we should let that slide, and I think it gives some clarification. But not all subdivisions are going to be on state roads, and you're still going to have occurrences where a developer's gonna come in and say, "Well, no, I'm not gonna do that, because I may have to cross a bayou to get over here." Well, staff may say, "We think it's necessary." I just, I see some potential problems there.
You know, I tell you what, I think is more important, I think we need to codify, you know, entrance gates and setbacks to entrance gates and security, when somebody wants to develop a private subdivision with private roads, you know, that's, you know, you know, we don't have a set standard of how to do that. I mean, I think that's more important than to mandate to staff, "Thou shall, thou shall require everybody to connect these subdivisions."
We'll be glad to look at anything you would like to suggest, just send me an email and we'll add it to our agenda.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to come forward and comment on this issue, please come forward. No one wishing to come forward, public hearing is closed. Any additional comments? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll make a substitute motion. No, excuse me, a motion to not recommend approval.
Julio.
Yeah.
Can I ask you to maybe change that motion, to send it back to?
I'll send it back to committee.
Committee for further?
I'll withdraw my motion and make a substitute motion to send it back to committee to further review the matter.
Substitute of substitution.
No, I'm just withdrawing my substitution, or amend my substitution.
They didn't get a second to your opinion.
Because I don't, I don't want to see the issue dropped. I do think we need to address it, but I think, there's a few other things that we need to look at as well with it.
Sorry, I have a motion.
Before we continue on to the motion, I'd take another comment, and Sherry, thank you for that, I will send you a couple of emails. I think that the mandate to connect parcels, it should be for commercial tracks, because that's where your block, your traffic issues come on a fronting highway. Where residential parcels, it may not be applicable always. I'm sorry, I just wanted to add that one comment. But, so I would, I would make a motion that we remanded back to the subdivision subcommittee for further review. That would be my, my motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, have a. The initial motion dies for lack of second, substitute motion by Julio Dumas to send the ordinance back to committee, seconded by Michael Marshawn. Any opposition? Motion carries. Second issue is to public hearing to review the adoption of the street name breaks when necessary. I don't know if you want to go over that. O'Neil, explain that a little bit, or let Ms. Sherry slam it in.
I think Sherry already explained it.
Yeah, I think she did.
We, the people don't know which street it's on, so we've asked the developer just to designate where one street ends and one starts, more than anything else. And that's pretty simple, this is a policy matter.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open for public hearing? Like to open the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward. Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Any other comments for the commissioners?
No, you would think that something as simple as this could be so logic, but I think that's an excellent catch, and I commend you for being this detailed, because...
Staff brought it to us.
Well, it's an excellent, excellent catch, I would have, you know.
And obviously, people miss it until they, as they draw.
Recommend approval of the policy, or no, motion to approve the policy? I guess we're doing a policy?
Yes.
Motion to approve the policy?
Second. Motion by Julio, seconded by Michael Marshawn, to approve the policy. Any opposition? Motion carries. Committee reports, subdivision ordinance committee, Sherry, anything?
Yeah, we actually had two meetings in January, because we were trying to get some items ready to bring before y'all, and then to the council. Two of which we did have ready for this meeting, which we just, we will revisit the one on the entrance and exits. And I do want to mention, like I just said, if there's anything dealing with subdivisions that anybody has any ideas, send me an email, we'll put it on the agenda. If there's something you know of, that, you know, that we have looked at or missed, just let us know. And the only other thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to bring it to your attention that the subcommittee has lost a valuable member of our team. With his knowledge and experience, Mr. Sigler was a valuable, one-stop resource for us. He was an essential member of our team who willingly took on projects and assignments. Due to his loss, we'll be starting over on some items of our agenda. And Mr. Don, our next meeting is Monday, the 25th, at 1 o'clock at DPW. And anyone who is available, you're welcome to attend.
Thank you, Sherry. Strategic Planning Committee, and I'm not...
Do they hold a meeting?
I don't know.
I don't think they held a meeting recently.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they made the appointment to, who's on it? O'Neil, do you know? No clue? Alright, I guess there was not a meeting. Item number 10, CSRS contract.
Everybody has in their packet the contract for professional services from CSRS, it expires tomorrow. And I ask this item be put on the agenda. Obviously, we, we don't feel we need to not have an ERA on call to address some of these concerns that we have. We have talked to staff and some of the new administration a little bit about this contract, and I feel that they provide a very much needed resource for the staff. I also understand that we are trying to go in a different direction as a parish and put some of these key personnel on as staff members, therefore, cutting back on the services that the ERA does provide. And I believe that the ERA is agreeable to, you know, do whatever needs to be done for the parish. I think they've been an excellent resource in the past couple of years, they've done an outstanding job, and I know that they've kept all of us abreast with changes and things that the parish is going through, the growing pains. And I'd like to recommend that we retain them for three months at this time. Obviously, I don't think it's beneficial to anybody not to suddenly stop their contract, because there's too much momentum, too much information they provide. Staff does count on them a lot of times for information. I think they will be probably minimizing some of that stuff, because we're getting some excellent staff members on board that can address these in-house, and I don't have to call on them as often. I think CSR is committed to help in any way they can. Obviously, they understand that, they respect the parish's position and will facilitate however they need to be called on to do so. So, I would like to recommend that they be extended for a three-month period, and at that time, then maybe we could revisit the issue, see if anything has changed, how it's working, if the staff feels that there's some other modifications we could make, but... And like, I'll open up the floor for discussion, like to hear your comments.
Well, I'd, I agree with you as far as extending the contract rather than renewing it at this point, because yes, we have been going in a new direction as far as hiring more in-house engineering, hiring more staff finally for our planning department to operate. What I would like to see during that 90-day period, though, is a statement, something in writing outlining in some detail what, what our in-house staff will be responsible for, and what our ERA would be responsible for, as well as, are we looking at hiring any other engineering staff? I mean, just, yeah, just how far are we going to take this? How far is this going to go? And I think 90 days is more than adequate time for us to get that, because I want the whole commission to get that information, and I think that's adequate time for us to get that information, it gives us a better idea. So, if, I mean, if everybody else is willing, I'll, I'll offer that as a motion.
Well, I have one comment. I question, when you only extend someone's contract three months, I question whether people are gonna be worried about their jobs. Is three months long enough? I have worked in engineering, the project's over, you're laid off. Are we going to get, are we going to be causing, I don't know, causing stress to employees about losing their jobs? Are we still gonna get quality work if we only give a three-month contract?
Well, the extension of a 90-day contract doesn't mean that you're going to wait until the end of 90 days to bring it back up either. I mean, conceivably, we could bring this up in 30 days or 60 days even, you know, within the next two commission meetings. The 90-day period is pretty much, I think, a standard period as far as an extension. You go that, or you just renew the contract again for another year. It's easy enough to have, the information that I'm requesting is easy enough for us to get by the next commission meeting. And at that time, I mean, if everybody feels, depending upon how everybody feels, I mean, it could, a motion could be made to bring it back up on the following agenda.
It's hard to answer that, I mean, it'd be hard for me to speak for them. I have a feeling that they'll be committed as much as they have been in the past, and there will be no loss of service. I think they've got a good staff, they've always, and they're more than willing to provide us what we need. I don't know that it will be any undue stress to them, but I can't speak for them, that's just my perception.
But at the same, I'm sorry, at the same time, if we're going to have more in-house engineering, doing more of the work that our ERA was doing, isn't that going to possibly necessitate laying off of people? I mean, it's...
We pay them by the hour, though, right? So, if we don't call them, we don't pay them.
That is correct.
Well, you know, it's the nature of the beast in the industry, they know they have a contract that's on an hourly basis. You know, we're also blessed in that these folks are extraordinary professionals who honor their responsibility greatly, value their professionalism greatly, and, you know, I don't, I mean, it's always, it's always hurtful to lose a contract, or be at risk of losing a contract when it's being reevaluated like that, or where there's a shift. But I think these people are very professional, and I don't, I don't know that it's gonna be, you know, any impedance to them at all, to be able to serve us.
I agree with what Michael is saying, and I also see what Sherry is saying. We are talking about this on the 13th, tomorrow is the 14th when it expires. So, I understand what Michael is saying, I see what Sherry is saying, and I agree with Mike, that let's revisit this either in a month or 60 days, let's not wait until the last minute to decide, as we're doing now. They expire, this expires tomorrow.
Uh-huh. We need to act on it tonight.
My motion stands.
Mike has a motion for three-month extension.
With, and also the review for the commission.
And do we put into that, I'm sorry, do we put into that, that we will revisit that within 60 days, within the next two meetings at some point?
It could be, I think it could be brought up under old business, or new business even.
Yeah, you're right.
It can be brought up, I mean, it's, I just...
I would think, yeah, no later than 60 days we need to have this.
Exactly. So, just so that we don't, we don't come to this, they have a 30-day notice of...
Right.
Sure. You get the information that I'm requesting, let's say that comes in next month's packet. What you're going through and you're reviewing it, and you have questions, you still have some more questions. Are those questions gonna be answered in time for the next meeting, or will it fall to the following meeting?
I think we're gonna add this, they have to try and come back with what you were asking for in 30 days of the next meeting, so that'll give us time to review it.
I think staff could have that information for us in 30 days with no problem.
Okay, have a. Motion by Mike.
Second by Julio.
Second by Julio, I think. Any opposition? Motion to extend CSR's contract for 90 days with a no later than 60-day reevaluation. Old business, anybody have any, I don't know if there's any old business we need to discuss. As Sherry pointed out, I know that Iran has not been retained by the parish. The parish has committed to us, they will try and get a new planning person on board as fast as they can, they are doing a good search to try and get that person up and running as soon as possible. They have made that commitment to us. Anything else? Item number 12.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Julio. Motion carries. Any opposition? Let me ask that. Motion carries. We are adjourned until 10 minutes from now for the zoning.